Welcome to the South Burlington School Board meeting. And we will start with comments from the public regarding items not on the agenda. Yes, Megan?
Yeah, there's a mic, the mic is picking.
All right, it sounds like it's picking up something. All right, well, as you know, I'm a member of the City Council and the City Council is actively engaged in events designed to educate the public about the prevalence of domestic violence, as well as have us come together to seek solutions in ways to let people know what resources exist, let people perhaps see that there are possible things, simple things that we could do in order to serve members of the public and be advocates for them. And so I am here as a member of the council, but also of an informal kind of action group. We're doing outreach to committees that we believe, that includes your board, that we believe have contacts with populations and with issues that touch on the various aspects of our personal lives and our private lives, as well as domestic violence. Among those committees are Affordable Housing, South Burlington Public Library, Recreation and Parks, the Planning Commission, and you all. And so I have the statement that was prepared by a member of the group. "We of the South Burlington Intimate Partner Violence Advocacy Group extend a special invitation to you to attend the October 30th Forum on Intimate Partner Violence." We recognize that each of you potentially has a role in addressing issues of intimate partner violence. And I would like to share with you the resolution that was passed unanimously by the City Council on October 16th, which, if that's all right, I'm happy to read at least some of these, some of these points for the public education. We are also sponsoring two forums, the first was on October 10th and the second now is on October 30th. This is just beginning a process of public engagement and education, it's not just ending with the October 30th event. And what's unique about these forums is that we've really brought together many people and organizations that are engaged in studying and addressing the problem of intimate partner violence. We have members of our police force, we have people who work with steps to end domestic violence, we have victims advocates, we have people representing the courts. Sarah George attended the October 10th, she is our county state's attorney. Hope Burks is there, Community Justice Center, as well as former victims and survivors who are coming forward. And this is an important gathering of people, they provide a lot of useful information that we as individuals can take back into our lives and, I think, apply in our relationships with other people. And I'm gonna be meeting with, I think, Elizabeth and David tomorrow, or on Friday, so I'll probably be talking a little bit with you to know how we can outreach more. So what I really want to share with regard to this resolution, because people are generally, you know, not aware of the impact of intimate partner violence. And often, and because of the stigma, we don't understand the issues that surround intimate partner violence. So let me take just a couple more moments of your time and read a couple of things. So we have this very startling figure, one in four women in the United States will experience domestic violence in their lifetime. So whether we know it or not, we know people who have been impacted by intimate partner violence. Most female victims first experience domestic violence between the ages of 18 and 24, and that's followed by ages 11 to 17, so here in our schools. And then it goes on from there. On average, more than three women are murdered by an intimate partner in the United States every day. And that is undoubtedly higher than other Western nations because of our Second Amendment rights and people own firearms. And women who own firearms are also at greater risk. Violence against women occurs predominantly behind closed doors, at home, with most cases never being reported to police. This is another important point, according to the National Center on Family Homelessness, domestic violence is the third leading cause of homelessness, the third leading cause of homelessness among families, with 50% of all women who are homeless reporting that domestic violence was the immediate cause of their homelessness. And we also have this important point, the risk of perpetration of intimate partner violence as an adult is two times greater for those who were abused or witnessed their mother being abused during their own childhood. Likewise, the risk of becoming a victim of domestic violence as a teen or adult is greatly increased when young people are raised in households where abuse is present. And I want to be clear that this is not only physical abuse, this is also emotional and psychological abuse, as well as economic control, control over the family's finances, okay? There are various types of abuse. This is another important one, one in 15 children are exposed to intimate partner violence each year, each year. All right, you know the number of children in our district. And 90% of these children are eyewitnesses to violence. And I want to be clear, domestic violence happens to people from all walks of life, regardless of age, gender, sexual orientation, race, religion, education, profession, or socioeconomic status. Okay? Nevertheless, there are statistical predictive indicators of domestic violence, probably the most important being exposure to it as a child. And it goes on, and the rest has to do with what we are doing with regard to these forums. These forums were organized in memory of Anako Lumumba, and I know that you are familiar with her. Her family has really embraced these forums, they want to be present, they want us to talk about what has happened to her and her family since the events became very, very, you know, tragically public to us. And so this is a matter that they want the public to be educated on, and so that her life is not in vain. If they can spare one woman, one family, by sharing their story that makes their loss a little less painful, and it's very painful. So I really just come here to invite you, and I'll talk more about what we can do for outreach with Elizabeth and David on Friday. All right, because we have a really terrific gathering of people.
At these events, I mean, and I know David can speak to the number of school programs we have on building healthy relationships, and also the experiences a lot of our families and children may have working through guidance, through staff, and through our administrators in terms of having experiences that impact their availability to learn in schools as well. So we'll continue that.
May I ask a question? Is it included, I know, I mean, I don't know the exact term of it, but I know that my own children, you know, went through some thing that I used to call sex ed, right? And is it included in those courses? Is there a chapter, is there something?
Yeah, the health education curriculum, you know, is an important area for us, and, you know, that's, happens articulated really K through 12, with more emphasis, obviously, big emphasis in middle school, but then continues into the, into the high school as well.
I might ask our two students.
Exactly.
Delaney, we'll put you on the spot before you even introduce, but Cole, we do have a healthy relationship unit in our health curriculum at the high school.
I can't remember if there is that in the middle school, but I do know that they do talk about consent and other things of that variety in the middle school curriculum.
I'm pretty sure we have somebody come in and talk to us about the cycle of abuse, which is really helpful.
And do they, do they provide resources to say, here's where people can go to get?
Yes, I, yeah, I believe so.
Thank you, we'll talk more Friday. All right, any other comments from the public, items not on the agenda? Jerry?
So Elizabeth, you have a September 40th master planning and visioning update. Does that include discussion of new construction? So I have comments about plans for the March onboard, dealing with the school. And I didn't know if the listing here was you're gonna do an update, or you're going to accept discussion on the construction. I don't know what it means.
That would probably be the place to...
I'll wait, I just wanted to clarify.
The comments, so, great, if you don't mind holding off. Any other comments? All right, we'll move on to any amendments to the agenda.
No.
All right, seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item Five and Announcements and Student Representative Report. And why don't we preface those by introducing our newest school board representative? Can Bridget, since you and Brian interviewed and made the recommendation, can you give a little bit of background? And Ashley, we'd like to, Delaney, have you talk a little bit about yourself, too?
I guess we didn't really prepare you for that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I wasn't prepared for how I know you weren't here to do that.
You're sorry.
Yes, so Cole was very instrumental in helping us to recruit two great candidates for our junior school board representative. Over the past few years, we used to have one school board representative, and now we've sort of moved to a model where we have someone start as a junior and do two years as school board representative, so we always have a junior and a senior. And so Brian and I were the subcommittee who interviewed both of the candidates, both of whom are great, both of whom have leadership experience in the high school. And Delaney really stood out for us because she's really made herself sort of a place that other students can go to talk to about really challenging issues in their personal lives, as well as other things that are going on in the school. And we just thought that because she's willing to put herself out there in that way, she would do a great job of collecting student voice and bringing that to the board and letting us know, you know, what students are thinking about different issues, or issues that we might not have thought of that are bubbling up in the district. And I'll let Brian say a few words if he would like, but, but I just want to say, you know, welcome. We think you're a great addition to the board, so thank you for being willing to take on the role, because it does take time and energy, so thank you.
Yeah, mostly just seconding what Bridget said. First of all, to you, Cole, thanks for digging up such wonderful people. We would have been great with either person, but I'm delighted that you're the one here. Just the amount of passion that you showed for the work that you're doing at school, and the idea that you could bring that to the board is really exciting, so I'm delighted to have you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, so for people that don't know, I am the founder of the Mental Health Awareness Club at my school, and I'm also a peer educator with Planned Parenthood, so I kind of act as a kind of resource to students where I can, if need be, bring them to guidance or anywhere else that they may need, or show them the right way where they can go get help. I thought it would be amazing to be on the school board, and thank you guys so much, to try and bring that perspective of mental health and sexual health to this board, yeah. Thank you guys so much.
No, likewise, yeah.
Welcome.
Sure, so just to continue off that, a huge welcome to Delaney, our new junior rep, and thank you to the board for getting her on so quickly. So in terms of the high school, Tuesday, October 22nd is the, is the High School Coral Sampler Concert, which will be in the auditorium. And next Friday, October 25th, is the TIE France, the International Exchange. French students will be coming from Paris-Gueule, and this marks the 40th year that our school has been doing this exchange with the school. Would you like to say their names?
Yeah, and then next Wednesday, the 23rd, marks the end of quarter one for all of us at the high school. And, and the band students are going to be taking part in the District III Band Festival November 1st. And that'll be at Colchester High School.
And then, at Chamberlain, the blood drive in honor of Ms. Beulie. Our communal members donated 65 units of blood.
Oh, wow. So Chamberlain School will also be receiving every, for a dollar for every reusable grocery bag purchased at Hannaford's on Dorset Street and/or Shaw's on Shelburne Road. Also kind of tying into that, the food shelf will be opening on the first, eight to 10, and then again, they'll also be open on the second as well, eight to 10.
And I know a lot of the clubs at the high school have been trying to get involved with the opening of the food shelf. I know it is becoming a really big community service opportunity, and all of the leaders of clubs have been contacted to see what their group can do to pitch in.
Right now, they're not accepting anybody to volunteer as, when they're in session, when they are open, but they definitely need help painting and just renovating the place.
All right, seeing none, we'll move on to city-school collaboration.
So as you heard from Megan, we have a meeting on Friday, people. And the other thing that we need to talk about is we're trying to nail down the dates for our steering committee meeting. So we did go back out with some dates, and Kevin has come back from the council. The two, two possible dates, October 28th, this is a change. I don't know that you can probably do this real time at the moment, probably not, we'll have to send you some updates. But October 28th would be the one hour, our claimed one hour at the high school to give a tour of, for the city council and any invited guests to do a tour of the high school, get a slight overview of the master planning and visioning, the concept that's currently out there, and be able to get a tour from some of the high school folks at the high school. So that would be on the 28th or the 29th. Right now, the 28th seems to work best for the council, so again...
That works for me.
Works for me?
Yep.
So...
In fact, that works better for the 24th, which is for everybody, but yes, that would be fine.
So it sounds like it's, we're a go for the, for the 28th, Alex, and...
Yeah, what's the time again?
Um, it will be, I think at seven o'clock is the time we're...
That's a Monday, right? So, yeah, that should be good.
Yep, that, send that again.
Yeah, we, we, we will, yep. And then the other day that's out there, which I believe was already okay, was the 5th of November, and that would be the legislative one, we would do the first hour with them, and then the second hour, you know, we would maybe, again, I don't know that we would have the time, but some of the items that we previously brainstormed was items that, you know, could be the healthcare component, there could be some of the local control, school construction, TIF. Some of those things were some of the areas that were there as well, so that was on the 5th. So I'll send those back out, we just, I just got an email back from Kevin today on kind of giving me an update on the council and where they were. So the 20th is a go.
Twenty eighth, so.
Yeah, the 28th, what did I just say, there's something to do? Twenty eight, enunciate, I'm like, 28.
So if there are any topics that any board members would like included in the legislative session and the steering committee meeting on the 5th, if you wouldn't mind sending those in to David or I, that would be very helpful. And we can probably do some of that on Friday.
Yeah, the few that I mentioned were some of the carryovers that we've previously talked about. Usually what we do is try to identify those, give a little snippet of the short rationale for the conversation to be had with the legislators. Thanks.
All right, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
So I've got three items here, I'm gonna ask Gary for a little help on Rick Marcot, so take it away, Gary.
So Rick Marcot is looking pretty good. Paving will happen October 21st to 24th for the top coat and line striping. That should be the last significant one lane period to access the school. The preliminary approval has happened for the construction of the new access road to Rick Marcot. Estimate is about three weeks to the start of that portion of the project. They are on schedule for, for an opening on November 15th, on time. And just driving, driving up Market Street is really looking much better. It's starting to actually look like a really vibrant, potentially vibrant streetscape.
Was there, is there a specific ribbon cutting that I just heard of?
Tentatively November 13th at 11 o'clock, which will be a little strange, because I think the street will not be open until the 15th for public use.
I'll change that date.
And just out of curiosity, is the, have the stormwater permits been received, you know?
I don't know. Tisa? I guess I don't know for sure, but I think it's a, I think it's a logical assumption that they have been received.
They were not received at the last meeting that David and I had, so we can check again on Friday, too.
I can check with, with Justin. But I, I thought, I was on the impression they had to be received before they, they started construction on the access road, because that, that really initiates their, their project.
Good, Gary. Rick Marcot, again, it, people have been collaborative, I think the website postings have helped if any distractions are going on. Again, there's been a fair amount of disruption, but people have been respectful and I'm appreciative of that. Chamberlain School Noise Mitigation, I still am awaiting a response from airport leadership around the specifics of my request around the 10% funding. So, you know, I'll be discussing kind of next steps around just reaching out to them and trying to get a response. So I've kind of been keeping track of, you know, when I've been asking and hopeful that I'll get a response pretty quickly. So if not, we'll, we'll figure out some...
Well, it hasn't been quickly yet, so I guess the question is, is there a, is there another level of...
Well, again, part of this is, is all centered around the grant, right? So we're, we're trying to get affirmation about the grant, and one component of the grant is this 10% match, and we've been pretty...
Well, I think that's our concern, is getting caught in a catch-22 of unless somebody agrees to fund the 10%, whether it's the City of Burlington or the airport, or South Burlington, that the grant wouldn't be applied for.
That's right.
So I, I guess the concern is the grant's being held up by that particular issue, so...
So quickly isn't the right phrase, getting a response is the right phrase, specific to the 10%. There's been some responses on other areas, but we have not yet received a response on the 10%. It's perhaps they're asking legal counsel and getting requests, it would be nice to know what that is, that's all. So I'll keep the board posted as that goes on. The budget timeline, again, is, is out, and again, I want to thank Amity and Gary for pulling this together. This is, again, we can certainly make some changes, I think as we look at it, from year to year, we make some slight revisions, but the CBAC is the Citizens Budget Advisory Council, if you didn't remember that. But you can see some of the things that are currently moving forward. Again, this is a big part of, we have to do a lot after starting a new school year without having a lot of information about the budget that we've just, we're in. So I don't know, again, I'll open it up to any questions, thoughts that you have, observations. Questions, again, both Gary and Amity are here, yep.
I think in the past years, we've sent out a call to people who are interested in joining the CBAC, has that happened already?
Yes, so go ahead.
And how many people are usually on it?
Um, I think last year we had five individuals, yeah.
Was anybody turned away, do you know?
No.
No? Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
In past years, there were more, I think, yeah.
And honestly, there was not one response to our ad last year, it was emails and outreach from our office to, to get my advisory committee, so...
It's a good opportunity for people that are listening, listening, whatever, if they're interested.
We'd love to have more.
To apply it. If people can't make every meeting, we'd like them not necessarily to be, you know, up at the table advising, but they certainly could attend the meeting.
The reason for that is there's a lot of background history, and if you have to every meeting give the background history and intricate details, then it's hard to move forward with any sort of fidelity with the, with the current group, but...
And to be clear, for people who aren't looking at the schedule, it's three meetings, right? Yeah.
So it's, it looks like it's three meetings, and then, of course, they're welcome to attend our board meetings and give their opinions on the work that they're doing and all of that, so it's really three sort of required meetings if you're gonna... It's a, it's a great way to learn more about the budgeting process and give input as well. And it was how I sort of started to get involved in school board issues before I came on the school board, was to be on that, because it gives you insight into the decision-making.
Yep. Thank you for that, Bridget.
Sorry.
So while we're at it, the, these three meetings are gonna take place on November 11th, December 2nd, and December 16th, each of them at 6:00 PM, so should be accessible to anybody who has a somewhat regular work schedule.
Yep, thanks for mentioning those, Alex, yep. Okay.
Any other comments on the budget timeline?
So we're in it, we're in it, and we're moving on it, it's hard to believe. We were talking today, like, we're feeling a little bit behind, but we're moving.
Okay, we'll move on to Agenda Item Eight, and this is Master Planning and Visioning Update.
Yep, so a lot has happened. I think between Bridget and I, we'll kind of give a little tag team, tag team update here. It's been a busy last couple of weeks. Last week, the 7th and 8th of October was user group meetings, and the user group meetings bring in staff, teachers, students into the, into the room, asking about questions specific to the new construction, ideas that they see from flow to environment, et cetera. So a lot of different questions over a two-day period. Prior to that, there was two days as well, where many of the same groups had the opportunity to come in and hear and ask questions. And as a result of that feedback, some revisements type things were done, either with staff around looking at adjacencies and spaces and things of that nature. The same thing happened with the middle school, both Monday and Tuesday of this week was the two, the second session, two days that went on with the middle school folks as well, similar to the high school. And then last night, we had an information session that was over at the high school library, and we provided, again, several board members were there as well, again, providing a background of how we got where we are, costs associated, and then the opportunity to give feedback, community feedback, in a breakout session after diving in a little bit more deeply around the construct of the facility. So that is, again, a quick little snippet. We today also, this morning, met with, at Doran Whittier, we met with engineers. So these were electrical engineers, mechanical folks, HVAC folks to look at opportunities and information, essentially just information around what type of direction we might want to go with fossil fuel usage to, you know, geothermal usage and what that means, what's the return on the investment, you know, all kinds of factors in there that we had. Again, Gary was there, Bridget was there, Bart Maselli, our facilities folk, was there as well. So it was, I think, a lot of receiving, but there was a few clarifying questions, and we have a lot more to go on that, and we'll be seeking some additional feedback from folks as well. So Bridget, take it away.
No, I think you did a great job of updating where we are. So the, right now, the architects, after all of these meetings, are sort of back revising plans, and we should expect to hear from them in November with sort of, you know, what they would propose to send off to the cost estimator. So there'll be another round of update to the board, and then they will send that off to the cost estimator round about Thanksgiving, and then they expect within about three weeks or so, so probably mid-December, we would have a more refined cost estimate. So a lot of the conversations have, have centered around, you know, we sort of have set that bar a little bit, and we're trying to fit within the footprint that we talked about in terms of square footage. There have been some challenges as, as, you know, as of course comes up when you dive a little bit deeper in terms of square footage, but they've worked really hard to try to keep within that, and I think more design work is going on in the background to try to stick with that. And, yeah, so that's where they are. I thought today's meeting was really interesting, very technical, but very interesting, and really spoke to some of the, I was pleasantly surprised that some of the trade-offs in costs might not be trade-offs. So some of the payback periods on certain environmental facilities, not all of them, some of them are more expensive than, you know, energy-reducing things sometimes have a higher upfront cost, but some of the things we were talking about today, certain portions of them actually were lower in upfront cost, just because how the technologies have changed. So there were some very positive things... So, there were some very positive things there. And then, Martin and I met this morning for coffee at Harborview with some of the folks there to kind of make a little mini-presentation and answer their questions. We got some good questions and feedback from them. I thought our two community input sessions went pretty well. We would have liked more attendance, but we had some pretty decent attendance and different questions, definitely the both, both of those meetings. And, yeah, food for thought and lots of great inputs. And then, I did want to point out that there's been some news coverage, not all entirely accurate once it was edited down, but there were two bits on WCAX. They came and interviewed me for a little bit, I guess it was Monday, and then they were at the meeting last night and interviewed a few parents, and, and they interviewed Lee Door, who doesn't work for a construction company, by the way, he is an architect. But, yeah, so that's kind of what's out there on master plan and visioning. Do you guys have any questions about this?
You triggered a thought. During the user group meetings, of course, as Bridget said, sometimes there's a desire to get down into the details of the intricate design, and I think the word that at least sticks with, with me is that, you know, we're looking, they're really looking at, looking at if they have the real estate right, you know? It's the size, and, and the, the need for space is really what was.
This was all space planning, and so the things like, like furniture and how many shelves, and what type of glass, and, you know, all of those kinds of things are things that would happen in the 11 months after a bond vote. So, the bond vote would kind of set, you know, what the budget is, and then all of that design work would sort of fit within that as, as best they could. But, but those details are things that will be up for more community input and more input from teachers and, and staff and all of that as we move forward. So, really, we're just trying to get the square footage right, and they have pretty good models about what this type of square footage costs, and the cost estimator will, will give us a pretty detailed report about their estimates. I should say, Art is here as well. We, in the consent agenda, you'll see, and Gary will talk about it more when we get to that, there are, there are bids in there for sort of pre-construction services. So, there's a bid in there for a contractor to kind of come and do a double check, basically, on what the cost is likely to be. So, really thinking through from their perspective phasing and costs and all of that, and that'll be another sort of check on what the architects will provide to us from the third party they work with. And then there's also a financial advisor that we'll need for the project and a PR firm as well. So, those will be coming up later in the agenda, but, yeah.
Any other board questions, comments? Public. Oops, sorry, Alex, did you?
Just want to point out, you mentioned that there were some inaccuracies in last night's reporting. Is, did you, did you want to make, set the record straight?
Well, I was kind of, they were, they were small inaccuracies. It was, it was an accuracy sort of of cutting down, you know, a lot of discussion into just a few words. So, for example, one of the things I said, they sort of kept identifying Lee Door as a, a construction company, you know, president, and really, it's an architectural firm, which is quite different than a construction company. One of the confusions that I'm a little bit worried that they showed with my interview is I talked through the whole spectrum of renovations to new build, and they cut that right down to try to say that this infrastructure renovation was probably gonna be about the same price as a new building, and, and those are, that's not what we've said. So, that was very unclear. I mean, what I had said in that interview was that when you get to renovations that provide us with really moving walls and, and getting adjacencies that we need to support the curriculum that we're trying to deliver, those deeper renovations, those wider renovations start to come very close in cost to new buildings, but that all got cut down into like 10 seconds of, of, of talking, so it looks very different than, than what was in the interview. I think that's very typical, though, of what, what, kind of what you say in an interview on television and what actually comes out. So, it wasn't purposeful misinformation on their part. It just looks a little bit odd once they edit it down and sort of add their spin on it, so. That's where we are.
Thanks.
All right. Public.
PR.
Public relations.
No, I know what public relations is. You're hiring a PR company for this new school. Is that right?
That is absolutely right.
And that's part of the $350,000 that you've allocated to getting ready for this new construction?
Yes, and then, you know, obviously, if the bonds, if it's approved, then it will be factored into the, the loan we pay.
Okay.
So, the, the PR, it's not atypical, again, we're not, we, we don't build schools on a regular basis, Jerry, so it's, again, these are, we're looking at kind of boilerplate systems that can help make sure the information gets out, gets out accurately, and that people are informed to the fullest. Because, again, when they go into the voter booth in March, you want them as, as informed as possible, and what we know is that a lot of people in our community expect and want, you know, information, and we have to do more, obviously, than we're doing now. We, we hope that people are following, but we know that in the PR side, we need to make sure we're sharing the reasons and the rationale.
And to be accurate, the RFP is for public relations and communications, which is the information piece, to make sure that the public has every piece of information to make an informed decision.
When I hear the word public relations, I don't hear two sides of the story. I hear one side of the story to support the position that's being presented, regardless of whether that includes relevant information, which is on the other side of the coin. This nation is a nation in which the majority of people believe, believe a coin has one side, their side. The other side becomes irrelevant. So, when I hear the word public relations, I hear a one-sided story being presented. Just telling you my reaction, that's all, okay?
Our hope is through communication, as, as Gary said, we will communicate the important events that we have like this, where information can be received and digested. And again, I think a good example is what we're doing right now with the user group meetings and the community outreach. There's been important feedback that's come back and to help formulate, you know, the, the going-forward need.
I know, it's a constant surprise to us because we, as a volunteer board, do our very best to try to write articles, you know, make postings, answer emails, and try to get people to come to events like these two community input nights that we had. And we feel like we're doing the very best we can, and we don't get great attendance, and then we get very close to a vote, and we have people telling us they're surprised to hear about things, and we don't, we don't want people to be surprised. We want people to know what's going on as early in the process as they can, so they can ask us questions.
And I have been doing the same thing on the community forum and doing as much as I can to educate people to the other side of the coin. And it's just an easy example, and this wasn't what I was gonna lead in, but I'll be very quick. There's the new school, there's the rec center, which they're gonna leave off the March one, because if people saw two large bond votes, they'd get nervous. There's the reappraisal. This is all on top of this year's city tax bill went up four and a half, 4.2%, when inflation is still below 2%. You're creating a real Pandora's Box with costing to South Burlington citizens going down the road. But that's a story for another day. You recognize this document, I presume? Okay. So, on page three, and from what I'm, I'm showing this document, which David recognized, the budget for FY '20, which he handed out on April, sorry, January 16th. On page three refers to student outcomes, and I'll just read some of them. A top-ranked Vermont school by U.S. News and World Report, is that true? This highly ranked, okay? Ranked among the best public high schools in Vermont by Niche.com. I have no idea what that is, but it sounds impressive. High school presently offers supportive accelerated honors programs in English, social studies, mathematics, world language, visual and performing arts and science. Approximately 80% of students will continue their education following graduation. I don't know what the national rate is, but I presume 80% is a pretty good rate, okay? Approximately 70 junior and senior students have participated in dual enrollment college courses. Standardized test scores consistently ranked among top in the state. I did look at the, what are called the, and I don't, I don't know where they get these names from, the smarter balanced test scores. I wouldn't say you're the best of the best, but the schools which in Chittenden County perform better have much lower enrollments to you, and then that creates a confounding variable, which makes it hard to compare the two. But generally, you score above the proficiency cutoff score, which suggests you're doing a pretty good job. I do have an interesting question. No school in Chittenden County was able to get above proficiency score for ninth-grade math. So, at some point, I'd love to see that exam, which no school in Chittenden County could get to the proficiency score level. That must be quite an exam, okay? So, your students are doing pretty well. 67 students are enrolled in, in the Vermont virtual learning collaborative online classes. 487 AEP course enrollments and 136 enrollments in college-level mathematics. It sounds like a great school. And as far as I remember, David, you can correct me if I'm wrong, going back a decade or two, this has generally been the performance outcomes for students in the South Burlington public schools. Would you say that's more or less true?
Yeah, I think, I would say that's more or less.
Okay. So, the point I'm trying to make here is we're now 20% into the 21st century, is that correct? 2019, if I'm doing my mouth correctly? So, we're well into the 21st century, and the school, for two decades into the 21st century, has been doing what it looks like to me, a very good job of educating your students. Yet, one of the big issues with the new construction is, especially with which you've been communicating to me, Bridget, is you want to prepare students for education in 21st century. We're already 20% into the 21st century. You talk about a new pedagogy, which these buildings will not support. Now, pedagogy is an area I have a whole lot of experience in. So, when you talk about moving rooms around or setting up a new structure in the building, that doesn't tell me pedagogy. It tells me you're moving chairs on the deck of the ship around, but it doesn't tell me at all how it's gonna foster improved education, especially when you're starting from a program in which you're already doing excellent education, you have outcomes to show it, and you're doing it in buildings in which you're 50 and 60 years old, and worse, and to put emphasis, David, I was thinking of calling social services and accusing you of child abuse since you're having students learn in a room without windows. I mean, how can you do that? Where's your humanity? All these outcomes are occurring in older buildings, which don't have as much light as you would want, and you're already starting from a point of extraordinary, not only academic excellence, but I brought with me the September 27th issue of the other paper. Is it 27? Or the 19? One of the other, which showed all the athletic teams in the fall, the South Burlington teams. And there's 180 students, I counted, they all look very healthy to me, they all look physically fit. That's just the fall. Now, they don't represent all the students in the school, but it says to me that it is possible in South Burlington for young people to be physically active, to play on team sports where they have to work together, which is a big theme in 21st century education, is working together. And that proves both athletically and academically, you're doing a great job. So, you have to tell me if you're gonna go from 55 million, which is what you call just renovations, to your option two, which is the 136 million, which you call limited educational objectives, to the higher options, where you're getting to 175, which is now 210. All of that is basically changing the physical structure of the room. So, you're spending somewhere between 150 and 200 million dollars to create new physical structures to facilitate better educational outcomes when you're already starting with excellent educational outcomes. So, you'll have to talk to me in specifics of pedagogy and not make statements like, I don't want to get this right, I don't want to misquote you. First of all, you said, "The board made the, made a decision that spending greater than 50 million dollars of community money to extend the life of the buildings without addressing any of the educational needs that have been identified would be an irresponsible use of taxpayer funds." Clearly, you must have some idea of these extraordinary new educational programs, which are going to give you enormous bang for your buck. How much is the buck? It's 150 million dollars, which is 210 minus the 55. Now, I would also say to you, Bridget, I went back to the April 11th, 2018 report by Door Whittier, and many of the things which you say explain the difference between 55 million and 31 million are included in the 31 million dollar estimate on pages 33 to 35. The handicapped access, the hazardous abatement, the, what was the other ones? Energy efficiency and code compliance, and they do talk about sprinklers. So, it still remains unclear to me that it's between 31 and 55 million, but whatever. The baseline 55 million going up to the current project cost of 210 million suggests 150 million dollars are being poured into a new school without any explanation of the new pedagogy. Now, I've seen, I looked at all the diagram layouts, I looked at all the interactive features that you're talking about, but pedagogy is a little bit different than physical structure. Pedagogy talks about how you're going to facilitate learning in a way in which the learner becomes engaged, understands critical thinking, understands how to process information. It's not at all clear to me that rearranging all the rooms on the, on the ship, on the chairs on the deck are going to do that, and it's a lot of money to spend on it. And to make sure you understand the money, because I don't think you've really done this early on, I just took your 210 million dollar figure and said, "Let's, let's talk 200 million dollars. Let's talk about a reasonable payback scheme for just principal, just principal. Let's do it for 20 years. Let's divide 200 million dollars by 20 years. It's 10 million dollars a year in payback." Now, on page 10 of David's handout, and I thank you for this handout, I, I did save it. Education spending is listed as 40,442,000 dollars. I'm not including, David, the external funds, because I know how you break this down. But the funds, the 40 million dollars, does include income sensitivity. I presume that's what you meant, augmented by the education fund. Okay. So, what I did was I subtracted the 5.6 million dollars that the education department has told me is the amount of income sensitivity that they sent to the community in the last fiscal year, from that 40 million, to come up with a number. I then said, "What percent of that, of 10 million of that number?" Okay, I took 10 million over the subtraction of the 5.6 million from the 40.4. And I'll give you the specific numbers, I wrote them down. And what it comes out to is you've just increased just the principal payback over 20 years, and you can do it differently. So, just, again, I know this is confusing. What I said was, 200 million dollars, we're gonna pay it back in equal installments over 20 years, that's 10 million dollars a year, okay? Then I subtracted the 10, I, I took the 10 million, I said, "What percent of the, the 10 million of the education fund that you have to raise from South Burlington, less the income sensitivity, which comes from Montpelier? You subtract 5.6 million from the 40 million, you come out 30, about 34 million. So, what percent is 10 million over 34? It's about 28.7%. You've just increased the education portion of the city tax by 28%. And if you take the education portion of the city tax bill, the education portion is 75% of the city tax bill. So, you've just increased, just in the principal payback, equal installments for 20 years, you've increased the city tax bill by 21% across the board. This is, doesn't include income sensitivity. Income sensitivity will help some people, there's no doubt about it. But income sensitivity only represents 14% of the total amount of money you have to raise from the South Burlington community. So, clearly, it's going to help some people, there's no doubt about it, but it's not gonna help everybody, and even people who benefit by it aren't gonna get a free pass here. So, you've got a 21% hit just from the principal payback over 20 years. Now, you could say, "Well, we'll do it over 40 years." If you do it over 40 years, what's the problem? This is a critical analysis. Students want to chip in? If I extend the term of the loan, what will that do to the total interest costs? This is where learning comes in. Everybody understand the question? So, if it's.
We're gonna, we're gonna keep moving, but can you wrap it up a little bit here?
You know, I, I have, I'm gonna present this to the community, so it's better it gets discussed here so that you can call me out if you think I'm saying something which isn't true. If you, if you double the principal payback time, 40 years, you're now going to tremendously increase the interest, because no bank is gonna give you 40 years' worth of principal at 20 years' worth of interest. That's crazy. So, you want to pay back the principal as soon as possible to minimize your interest costs. I'm telling you this because you spent an enormous amount of work on this new building. 150 million dollars basically is reconfiguring the structure of the building. You haven't provided any specifics of pedagogy, which is something I've spent more than two decades dealing with. And you don't understand the impact on people's tax bill, and if you don't put it out in the public domain, I certainly will, and I'll explain my calculation. And when people see, before the rec center, before the reappraisal, their overall tax bill is gonna go up 20% every year for 20 years using the scheme I just did, and if you think after 20 years they're gonna go back to the original, you're, you're nuts. No government ever does that. That's a, that's a big hit on the tax bill. So, I don't think you've done the cost analysis. You keep on talking about things like the building layout does not support the 2019 curriculum. Well, for the first two decades of the 2019 curriculum, you've produced highly educated, highly athletically gifted students. So, what you're saying is, "I'd like a nicer building, but I doubt it's gonna make a huge difference." And I just remembered something else I wanted to say. Now, David, you always tell me that I have experience teaching at the. Now, David, you always tell me that, I have experience teaching at the university level, where most of my experience is, but I've done 10th grade, 12th grade, undergrad, grad, residents, attendings, and I've done adult school nutrition. I, I have a lot of diversified experience. But let me ask you this. So you're going to prepare the students in a certain way, like proficiency-based learning, and I've been reading up on it on the Vermont State website. It allows students to progress to a competency at a level they're comfortable with. Is that, is that a fair assessment?
I want to say that they're comfortable, that we feel this brings about their requirement.
Okay. So I've been reading articles under Vermont Digger. There's clearly a lot of discussion all over the place, teachers, students, et cetera. Here's my question to you. At a, as a university level, let's say I'm teaching a STEM course, and one of your students is enrolled and comes to me and says, "You know, the way I learned these competency, I was given as much time as I needed to learn the competency, and I'd like to follow that same paradigm. Or, you know, I was allowed to work as a team, and I'd like to do the same thing in the class." Do you expect me at the university to say, "Oh, that's fine. Everybody else does it this way, and you can do it your way"? Do you think that's realistic? So what I'm saying to you is, you need feedback from the university community. You don't want to prepare your students for the next step in their educational career, which is going to put them in conflict in the paradigm of how they learned in the public schools versus how the university is going to expect them to learn at the college level. I'll stop, Elizabeth, but I still don't think you've considered all the relevant information, and you're going too fast. And I understand there's a 5% to 6% penalty for not moving ahead quickly, but I think there's so many things you haven't dealt with, you're moving much too quickly for the magnitude of this project, and I'll stop there.
I mean, just a couple, just quick things, and there's a lot that you have in there. You know, 31 to 55, you, you, you don't see that. The reason for the change is the duration of the time to get that work done. Okay, one. And, you know, the other part is, what, what do we do with students during that timeframe while you're trying to renovate? So those are the two most impactful components to the 31 to 55. Second of all, what you, you talk about pedagogy, and, you know, we, there's, there's a lot of different components of that, but I'll just cite one. We have these extended learning, you've looked at the plans, Jerry?
Yes.
So these extended learning spaces, again, the university have, has these, but the opportunity does not exist for us where you have a particular problem, you're actually coming up with a little bit of a problem that individuals at certain levels in your class could actually go out and work on and solve. We don't really have that capacity now, where students have the opportunity to go out and actually try it, right? You're taught, you're teaching a math class, you're, you're doing whatever. Actually go out and try it, where I can see through passive supervision. The opportunity pedagogically significantly increases. Just one tiny example that exists, that we don't have now. Again, if you've seen some of the work, we have teachers now that, again, are doing the very best that they can, but one foot's on the door, the other foot's trying to, trying to navigate that, right? Doesn't happen all the time, but it's an opportunity that propels, you know, learning significantly. Again, just one example of, of what we don't have. And to try to make those modifications to buildings that we have currently, it just, it doesn't, it just doesn't make sense. So, anyway.
I don't understand the 80 million dollar transition from 55 million to 135 million with little educational benefit.
I was giving you the 31 to 55.
No, I understand, I understand. But in the Dorwiddie, the 31, they had a seven-year time span. They had priority one, two, and three. It was over a seven-year time span. And nowhere in the original presentation in April of 2018 did they give any indication that the school would be have to close down while the renovations were going on. Now, maybe that just wasn't their charge at the time, but...
That's correct, it wasn't their charge. It wasn't their charge. Their charge was just to identify the issues at hands between the two schools, and it was 15 and then 17, or 13 and 17, which, yeah.
Nothing you said has convinced me that the bang for your buck is justified at this point, even if what you're saying is true, if indeed my calculation is correct. And that's just principal. I haven't included the interest, which everybody knows is going to be quite significant. You're talking about at least a 20% hit to city tax bills for at least my scheme, 20 years. That's a big hit. It doesn't include, and Elizabeth, I'm sure you're aware, this bond gets approved, you think your negotiations with the SBA this year, it was hard? Good luck next year, I'll tell you that much. And then there's the rec center, which is going to be at least 50 million dollars, if not more. There's all these hits to the city tax bill, and you're leaving this to the very end. I gotta tell you, I think that's crazy. But one thing I remembered, is there a list of proficiencies anywhere on the school website?
Yeah.
Okay. I would like to see what they are.
Comments, discussion? All right. Thank you, Jerry. Any other comments from the public? All right. We will move on. The next update, or is to designate and authorize representative from South Burlington School Board to vote at the VSBA conference in early November on both the VISBIT, the Vermont School Board Insurance Trust proxy, as well as the VEHI Vermont Education Health Initiative proxy. And this is worn for action. The other item that was not added on here, but doesn't necessarily require action, but would be a review by the Board of Resolutions that might be presented at the annual meeting and taking an opinion on those, which is typically something we've done. So we do have time to do that at another meeting before then, but this specific item is to take action on designating and authorize representative.
So it's in your packet, there's the information about the annual meeting notice from Laura Soris to you, and also outlining, there's a, I think page three or four is, towards the end of that packet, is the certificate of authority for the proxy.
I will volunteer. I plan to be at the meeting, and I would not have a conflict serving as that proxy vote, as I'm no longer on the VEHI board.
I was just going to say, I nominate Elizabeth this year up to the order. Designate.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. I will do that.
So what, what else, anybody else going? I mean, I haven't figured out if I can go yet. I'll go in a couple days.
I didn't understand, I read through the packet, I promise, but I don't understand what happens there. It seems like it only takes about 20 minutes, according to the...
These are the annual meetings, which are embedded in a two-day conference.
This is strictly two proxies associated with services that the district receives from those organizations, but the annual meeting itself, you should have received a copy of an agenda for the annual meeting.
By email, yeah, yeah.
And actually, I don't, I have, don't have the list of resolutions yet myself.
Yeah, I'm just going to, yeah.
Okay. So maybe we should get that out, and...
Well, then I can look back, okay, but it's on the 7th and 8th, and it's in, Friday, in Lake Maury, Thursday, Friday. Yeah, no, you don't have...
Yeah, and you know, there's, there's an overnight provision, if that's what you want, or there's a, you know, if, if you want to come down, you know, and, and do that as well, there's opportunities to do that. Again, it's made up of superintendents and school board members, and so there's joint, there's a conference, obviously, that's talking about, you know, like and important things, usually a speaker, and then there's some workshop opportunities for both board members and superintendents, or, again, combined opportunities. And then usually there's the business meetings that happen either for superintendents and for school boards. And at the school board meeting, although some superintendents will be, will also sit in, but that's where they're talking about resolutions and getting some direction from the board.
Yeah, it's a valuable experience to go there as a board member. You get to understand what's going on, and there is some time to actually socialize with other school board members as well. I mean, I'm going to try to go, also in part because I'm sure that what we're trying to do with the buildings here, in fact, I know, is something that's being discussed across the state at different, at different school boards. So I, I'm going to try, I just had to clear one thing before I do that, so. But if you can't do it this year, just in the future, it's a valuable learning experience.
If we could get the agenda out for the meeting to each of the board members, and then you can individually make a decision.
And I'll dig through the email, I'm sure I have it. Yeah, okay.
All right, and then we'll, we'll add resolution review on a future agenda item.
It could have to be the next meeting.
It would have to be, yeah. Just tuck that away.
Yep. Don't let me forget to add that, maybe, resolutions.
And just a couple of announcements there. The district did receive a notification of dues for VSBA, and there was a three-year strategy of looking at modifying the dues based on a couple of variables, size of the district and that sort of thing. So I think this is the third year of that implementation, and dues are approximately 8,000 or 9,000, I believe, for South Burlington. And then there was, the executive director has changed for the VSBA, or that'll be an effective change in early November, and Nicole Mace is stepping down, and I believe Sue...
Siglowski.
Siglowski.
Yeah, who has been legal counsel for VSBA will be stepping into that executive director role. All right.
So in preparation for the resolutions, will that, like, we'll get that onto the...
We should get on the next agenda then.
And who should we try to get? Who should we get the resolutions from? From VSBA?
Yeah, from VSBA, I would.
Yeah. Do you know who that, that's been usually Nicole?
Carrie, Carrie Ursu, and Carrie Lamb Ursu.
So if we could get those sent out in prep for the next meeting? All right. So agenda item 10, executive limitations, policy monitoring, this is worn for action. 2.4, financial condition and activities.
So we have both Gary and Amity here, so welcome to them. Before we get going, I just wanted to, you know, recap again, those of you who are acquainted with the, with the policy governance and monitoring, this is financial conditions and activities. I wanted to just preface that by, obviously, this report covers the 1819 school year, and important to note that the 1819 budget, which was arrived at and set, was actually done during the 1718 school year, right? So it's similar to what we're doing, about to do, for the budget that will, that will forecast the following year. Some of the assumptions and recommendations that were made and provided to me by individuals, they don't, they no longer, they're no longer here. Again, just want to make that known. Amity and Gary are going to talk through the report, answering questions. I also want to acknowledge that I've gotten some questions from, from board members that I've not, we've not been able to fully answer, so those are not here. And so as a result, I think being able to call, have an action item for tonight would be, my, my case not recommended, unless you want to change that, and that we would put this on to the November 6th school board meeting. So, anyway, I think as we progress, again, questions will come up, I'm sure, as we move through. So, Amity, Gary, welcome.
Thanks.
So I guess I'll just get started going through the policy monitoring 2.4 and discussing each policy in details. So detail policy number one, it talks about expending more funds than having been received or budgeted in the fiscal year to date, and we're referring to fiscal year FY19. That has not been, we're in, currently being audited as we speak this week. So these numbers that are in this report are unaudited at this time, and we'll have hopefully a final audit in December, January timeframe. So the interpretation is that the, interpret funds to include the approved budget amount as well as money received from external sources such as grants. And in addition, at the close of the fiscal year, expending funds will not have exceeded available revenues. Available revenues include revenues earned in the current year, as well as budgeted drawdown of earned and carried over from prior fiscal years. So we refer to that as the fund balance. So for FY18, expenditures were below budget by 857,669, and revenue received at 47.3 million was below budget of 1,60,255. But because the total expenses were less than the total revenue at the end of both budget, or general fund and special revenue funds, they were less than the total revenue received by 678,826. And this is detailed in Schedule I as part of our exhibits that are attached, so refer to those numbers on that. So for FY19, again, subject to audit, our expenditures in both the general and special revenue funds amounted to 49.6 million, and they were below budget by a total of $30,000. So we came in basically at zero. The actual revenues received were 48.3 million, which were below budget by 823,000. We carried forward from prior fiscal years, our fund balance, an undesignated amount of 555,000. So that was between the 823,000 and then the 555,000, that was from prior fiscal years, our ending fund balance is in a deficit, both general and special revenue of 314,000. But with special revenue funds, those are all designated, so you aren't able to carry those forward into fiscal years and expend them as fund balance. They are always committed. So if you are looking at the preliminary financial report that's also attached to this, it gives a little bit of detail on how this balance breaks out between our general fund, our special revenue funds, and then the combination of the two. So we do have to report pilot, policy violation, because we have over expended our funds more than what was received in revenue. And what we had is carryover to expend as well.
So, Amity, can you clarify, on policy, under 2.4, under policy one?
Yes.
You're reporting violation for expending more funds than have been received or budgeted. Is it both?
No.
No, it's received. Exceeded available revenues is what the policy.
So expenditures were still under budget slightly?
Yes.
But?
But.
We didn't get all the revenue that we expected.
Correct.
And, and again, can you clarify designated versus undesignedated?
So designated is those funds that have, they're already committed to other expenditures. And so undesignedated means that can be utilized for future budgeting.
Common term historical would be a surplus, a fiscal year surplus, but that verbiage was changed several years ago to undesignedated fund balance.
Okay. Thanks.
So then we'll circle, we'll be circling back to that, but...
Yes, you keep moving on.
Can I ask one question? Who is the district data manager?
Because I guess I'm just not familiar, who is that position? And is that a new position, really, or is it sort of changing someone from what they were doing into, I'm just confused about that.
No, it was, it previously was Ray Mann, it is now Michelle Davino. She's, she replaced his position, same position we've had all along.
Okay. Okay. This was, I didn't think that we had said that there was a new position coming on, it was just confusing the way it was worded, so.
Right, sorry.
Okay. Just clarifying.
Okay. So as far as the, the policy violation, the plan is to, to bring the situation, obviously, into compliance is in place by the Office of Operations and Finance, identifying revenue budgets and how those are, are in place, and monitoring those with additional scrutiny. And then, again, like you mentioned, the district data manager to talk a lot about our tuition and our enrollment, so that we are more informed as we head to this next budget season as well. And then we can also also keep an eye on our current revenue to see that we're on target for what we had planned in FY20 as well. We have not done our first tuition billing yet, that happens in November, so.
I think on that compliance plan, a number of the questions you received, David, asked for some specificity on, and more clarity on what that plan is.
Yes.
Yes, we, we understand that.
I think that's, and I would also not recommend taking action on this until the board receives additional information.
So in detail policy number two, it speaks to incurring debt in any amount greater than can be repaid by certain otherwise unencumbered revenues within 90 days. So superintendent interprets this to mean that borrowing is only undertaken with the authorization of the board to ensure timely and adequate cash flow, and this is accomplished through the issuance of tax anticipation notes. So in evidence FY19, we did need to request a tax anticipation note, as the fund balance, having been spent down, changes our cash flow. And so we asked the board for their approval of a 2.5 million tax anticipation note, and we expended $2,877 in interest on that note. And just as a historical data, in FY18, we borrowed 3 million for our tax anticipation. And there's no outstanding loans owed by the district, other than long-term bonds that were approved by voters. All bond payments in FY19 were made on time. So we... So we report compliance.
And my recollection is that that was a single tax anticipation note.
That's correct, yep.
And I think in the past, we've actually had to do that on more of a rolling basis.
Yes, and that could possibly happen.
Dealing with things like healthcare premiums, or payroll, things like that. So I would highlight just that it was a single tax anticipation note.
So in Detail Policy Number Three is the use of any long-term reserves. The Superintendent interprets the long terms to include our maintenance capital reserve fund, our retirement fund, capital project funds, and the school foundation funds. So our evidence for nineteen, there were no expenditures or withdrawals made from the reserve fund, so that stays at the three hundred thousand that we set it at a few years ago. The Support Staff Retirement Fund is being managed by S E I Trust, who invests the assets and makes the payments to our retirees. The payments for the funds are calculated and tracked by a third-party administrator, which is Future Planning Associates. And the balance in this fund on June thirtieth was eleven point eight million, and that's in part in Exhibits, which was a six point two percent increase compared to FY eighteen. And the district contributed five hundred and eighty-one eight oh one to that fund during FY nineteen, and this fund was appropriately used to pay retirement benefits and for no other purpose.
What was the actuarial requirement?
I don't have that number, but I can get that number.
And is there any plan to issue an R F P for a third-party administrator on this?
We haven't made the plan, but certainly it's probably something we could pursue.
I guess I'd be looking if there's an intro, or a recommendation to look at an R F P.
On the third party.
Yeah.
So Bullet Three is FY nineteen, the district continues to work on projects from the voter-approved FY nineteen bond, that was for nine hundred fifty thousand five hundred dollars, that had various improvement projects, along with the bathroom fieldhouse at the high school. As of June thirty nineteen, four hundred ninety-five one eleven was expended on those projects, leaving a balance of four hundred fifty-five thousand. Significant items remaining from that bond include the completion of the Munson Iverson Trek restroom training room project and parking lot upgrades. And the Superintendent utilized proper authority in paying those bonds that were due in FY nineteen, and all draws on this fund were pre-approved by the city treasurer. And number four, the student scholarship funds are held by the school's foundation, and payments are made to the district, which we in turn issue the checks to the students who are recipients of those scholarship awards. The foundation's scholarships are accounted for by the firm of J M M and Associates, who also file the required forms for the I R S for that organization. And it does mention other funds that are held by the foundation can be distributed to the district if there's specific collaborative projects that are undertaken. At this point, there hasn't been any in FY nineteen, and the last major project was the bleachers on the Munson Field. So we report compliance on that policy. Detail Policy Four, talks about conducting inter-fund shifting in amounts greater that can be, then can be restored to a condition of discrete fund balances for certain otherwise unencumbered revenues within thirty days. So this interpretation is to mean that the monies cannot be transferred among general funds, nutritional funds, and schools-out funds, or student activity funds for more than thirty days. Our evidence is that we budget for two inter-fund transfers, one fifty thousand dollar transfer from the schools-out fund into our school general fund to help offset the costs of doing their accounting and payroll and oversight for that program, as it is a enterprise fund. And the second transfer of fifty thousand dollars in nineteen was to the nutritional services fund to help defray old deficit that has been in that fund for a number of years. I report that those inter-fund transfers were made, and no other inter-fund transfers were done during FY nineteen. And in addition, because we have one general fund account for all our checking and cash, we do have transfers between the funds to pay the bills, which is normal operational transfers, and they are kept separate in our accounting system with what's called a due-to and a due-from account, when you're talking fund accounting, in the amounts of which are confirmed at the annual audit report, which our auditor is here, and he could probably speak to that, too. Audit report notes that highlight these operational receivables and payables are in Exhibits. So I report policy compliance on that.
Can I ask for, I just sort of noticed this interpretation here, but if monies, if the interpretation is monies cannot be transferred among these funds for more than thirty days, is budgeting an inter-fund transfer actually out of compliance with that interpretation? I don't know the answer to that question.
Yeah, it probably, probably, the policy would need to be more, maybe more specific, right? So you can't do inter-fund transfers without the approval.
Because the Detail Policy implies that it would be restored?
In thirty days.
Maybe some clarification on that one.
Well, I think that the board has approved that, means that there's compliance. Presumably, presumably that, that doesn't even have to be, that evidence is not necessarily relevant, because that was all board-approved. The additional fifty thousand dollars.
I think what I'm, I'm saying, though, is, I know it was approved in the budget, and we have this discussion every budget year, but I'm not sure our Detail Policy Four or the Superintendent's interpretation supports the action the board took in the budget.
But this is just restrictions on the Superintendent, it's not restrictions on the board, this particular policy, that's my point.
And that's greater than.
The fact that we approved this has taken it out of essentially this policy.
Yeah, I'm not, this is where we get into policy governance interpretation. I guess I would like administration to just review that for the board.
Offer that maybe it's the idea of a shift, and what they're saying in Evidence Number One is this thing that we did isn't a shift. It's a payment that we did for a service, so you might see it in this thing and think, oh, they shifted it and didn't pay it back, and their evidence is actually to the contrary, saying that it's not a shift, it doesn't fall under the policy. So we did this thing, and if you were looking at our accounting, you might say this was a transfer, but it's not, because we don't intend to give it back, and we budgeted it. Does that make sense? So it's like evidence of something.
I know what, I know what you're saying, I just want to make sure administration and the board aren't being held to a different standard. And, and believe me, I've walked myself in circles many times on policy governance, so that's not unusual.
So I, I think additional clarity, clarity could be provided on interpretation, my thinking, to the point where what we're trying to ensure is that we can't shift funds from schools-out to nutrition, right? But in no place does it say that it doesn't, for services rendered, right? We're rendering services for the enterprise fund.
Well, that's part of it, but I'm also looking at the transfer to defray the old deficit, because in some ways, this is.
But that's not transferring it to either, either one of those, it's, it's paying off their debt, which is an agreement in which we've made, and had auditors approve a process. So I'm just looking at it from a perspective of, is there, are we under compliance? That we aren't conducting inter-fund trans, shifting amounts greater than can be.
But remember, the inter-fund shifting is also governed by the language that says that those would be restored within thirty days.
Well, that's what we shifted them, right? That we can't shift them. So if somebody, if, if one fund's in, in need of, of funds, let's say, nutrition, and we don't want to do anything, we want to shift it from schools-out to nutrition, we could do that, but we have to restore it within thirty days. To the general fund for services that we're currently conducting for, like, bookkeeping services for schools-out, that is a, that is a.
Yeah, that's a service rendered and a charge, I get, I get that.
Yeah, I'm, 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 I'm just trying to, you know, figure out what clarity.
If I was more general, this is a limitation on the Superintendent, it's not a limitation on the board.
Well, I, I would like that, maybe I'd like that clarified, because I'm.
That should be, that we could say that a lot, almost.
Almost every policy.
Every policy, not every policy, there's, well, we could say it on every policy. Of course, there are restrictions on what the board can do that are under statute, that we couldn't, like, you know, give ourselves a raise of a million dollars, whatever, I mean, that would not be allowed, but we don't, that's not restricted by our policies, our limitations on the Superintendent, is my point. We could have many of these policies, we could add without board approval. Can't do this without board approval, but that's a given, and I think that's, that's implicit on every one of these policies. Whether the board can give it approval or not, that's a separate question, and that's, that's governed by our component of the policy limitations, and also by statute and rules, so I probably didn't clarify anything.
I'm confused.
At the beginning, it says the Superintendent shall not for each one of these.
Yeah.
And you could add without board approval, to the extent the board permitted by statute and other.
I am just reacting to the, the wording of Detail Policy that does suggest, so it's, so even if you precede it with the Superintendent shall not, it talks about inter-fund shifting in amounts greater that can be restored within thirty days. And I, I don't think there is that expectation.
Good point.
Well, I don't want to, I don't want to derail this conversation, because again, this won't be the first time I, actually, I'll say any one of us have lost it on policy governance, but I seem to more than, than most.
Actually, we're happy.
So I don't have the policy in front of me, but the way you're reading it, it sounds, it sounds like two different things. The one that talks about thirty days, it sounds like the transferring of cash to supplement cash in one of your funds, what as a appropriation transfer, as an actual budget amount that you're actually transferring from your general fund to another fund for whatever purpose that it's there for.
And I think that's, I think that's a little bit of what I'm reacting to, is there's decisions that are made on a budget basis to offset a deficit, and there's cash flow that's approved on an operational basis for services rendered, and that may be where it's not as clear to me, because we, we're calling them the same thing, but again.
Well, I think it hinges on that, that weird, I think it's kind of straightforward, shifting, like this, what, what does shifting mean? And does that mean, does that mean a budgeted transfer, or does that just mean, as you're saying, you know, a shift? Yeah, it sounds like cash, but I understand where Elizabeth's coming from, and it's not explicit, it's all up for interpretation of that one weird word.
Could be either one of these, just to reflect the way it's being operationalized now. Because I understand what's being done, I just, again, I don't, I don't want to derail this.
No, it makes sense.
Too much, I'll go down the rabbit hole.
That you didn't do that on your own, David.
It's not the way it works, you know.
Even though we don't know what the policy is.
You didn't fail to do something.
It wasn't David's.
All right, sorry, Amity, I, I just, yeah, derail that.
Okay, Monto, Policy Number Five, failed.
To settle payroll and debts in a timely manner. Interpretation of debts to mean all financial obligations other than payroll, and interpret timely to mean avoidance of late penalties and fees over fifty dollars. For any debt that is not covered by budgeted revenue, timely manner means ninety days. So the evidence, all payroll date payments in FY nineteen were made on time, and during FY nineteen, we identified twenty-seven invoices that were paid ninety or more days from the invoice date. All of these invoices were paid, this word is wrong, I don't know what that meant, were paid on, all these invoices were, and I don't think paid or with should be there, under three thousand dollars, and several were due to invoices not being received from the department and where the invoices were sent. We still wrestle with that, these vendors, we try, try, try to make sure they understand the billing address is not the same as sometimes the shipping address, and the teachers don't think they need to send us sometimes, and so those get lost in the shuffle. So Exhibit Four does show all of those payments that were greater than ninety days from the invoice date. Number three, there were no late payment fees for any, or incurred during FY nineteen. And number four, no contracts or obligations were entered into in nineteen that extended into future fiscal years. And we talked to the status of the labor contracts below, which we know have changed since this was actually printed, because the teachers have had a settlement.
It also, the, the Support Staff One, I think there's a mistake in the, the first date, because it says that we started in October of nineteen, and we settled in May of nineteen, so I don't know how we, like, went back in time. I'm teasing, but yeah.
Yes.
Those are reversed.
Yes, we are, Martin and I are that good at what we do.
That's right. Get our dates very confused in these reports, I have to admit. So we talk about the administrator's contract is still currently being negotiated for FY nineteen, uh, twenty, excuse me, see, I'm doing it again.
Yep.
And we did have the settlement in the Support Staff, and we will adjust those dates to be opposite of what they say. And their expires, every agreement that is settled is going to expire June thirty of twenty twenty, they were all one-year contracts, and then we can also report settlement in the teachers, right? Yes, we did. The lease for two thousand nineteen, that was entered and approved by the board in June and August of eighteen, gave, or was for equipment, that totaled six hundred and thirty-one thousand, it was a three-year and a four-year term, and the three-year was for our one-to-one Chromebooks, and the four-year was for bus video surveillance cameras and computer equipment at a rate of four point three nine percent. So we report compliance in that. Detail Policy Six, states allowing tax payments or other government-ordered payments or filings to be overdue or inaccurately filed. We import, we interpret this to mean the, all filings of fiscal nature and payments substantially accurate and submitted when due, that also includes quarterly payroll payments, and as evidence, there is a chart that shows all of the state and federal reporting by date and when they were filed, and if they were on time, and every file, every report was filed on time. As we take our deadlines extremely seriously, so we try really hard to make sure that that stays in compliance. Detail Policy Seven is to make a single unbudgeted purchase or commitment of greater than twenty-five thousand, or the addition of a point-five F T E teacher, and splitting orders to avoid this limit is not acceptable. Superintendent interprets this to apply only to items or services not included within the voter-approved budget, and the board approval is required to expend more than referenced above. So in FY nineteen, an addition of one point oh F T E teaching position at Central School was approved, it was in our contingency fund, so it wasn't really unbudgeted as far as money, but the F T E itself was not in the budget at that time. And the addition of safety and security staff was approved at the August first, twenty-eighteen board meeting, and that amounted to two positions that were not included in the budget, and they totaled forty-five thousand eighty-five dollars. So we report compliance. Detail Policy Number Eight, spending prior year's undesignedated fund balance, our favorite subject. So this first part, the interpretation comes from part of the V S A law, but it requires that absent any action by voters at a regular or special meeting, undesignedated fund balance remaining at year-end is to be carried into the following fiscal year as revenue to offset the cost of budgeted expenditures in that year. Undesignated fund balance may not be expended during the immediate next year. As Superintendent, he is not authorized to expend funds in excess of funds generated and budgeted in the current year. By state law, for any undesignedated fund balance to be used other than to reduce the amount to be requested from the ed fund the following year, that purpose must be approved by the voters at a regular or special meeting. Revenues included in the current budget are not an undesignedated fund balance. An undesignedated fund balance is determined at year-end, and spending of current year funds is controlled by other details in this policy, particularly one and seven. So the evidence in the FY eighteen audit report, the undesignedated general fund balance at June thirty is reported at sixty-five thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars, which is attached as an exhibit as well. And in the preliminary results for our FY nineteen, the general fund balance is projected to be in a deficit of five hundred seventy-seven thousand two hundred and eighty-six dollars. But because in the FY twenty proposed budget, we targeted a hundred and sixty-nine thousand as a carryover revenue source for. for the amount that we will need to be budgeting in FY twenty-one, as our anticipated deficit is seven hundred and forty-six thousand two eighty-six, which is the five seventy-seven two eighty-six deficit, as, as well as the hundred and sixty-nine thousand that we chose for our, as our carryforward funds for twenty. So on, on the preliminary financial pay, um, report results, there's a little chart on page two that kind of shows again how the projected deficit goes into the FY twenty-one budget. And again, these are unaudited numbers, so things could change, they may not be these numbers when it's all said and done. But we ended our fund balance at June thirty in the five, in a deficit of five seventy-seven two eighty-six. But we also have to add in the carryover in the twenty budget that was available, so we have that seven forty-six two eighty-six as our deficit for the FY twenty-one budget season. That was a lot of numbers and a lot of.
Yes.
Yes.
Not an easy explanation.
I know.
Aside from getting into more detail, how are, are you reporting compliance?
We are not. Oh. Oh, sorry. So.
No, we are.
We are, on this particular, we are reporting compliance, because this is spending prior year's undesignated fund balance, which
We did.
we did that. That is not out of compliance.
Right, policy eight is to spend prior years' undesignated fund balance, so we're under compliance that.
I mean, we did spend the undesignated fund balance, that was not, that was not out of compliance.
The law requires us to expend that fund balance.
So then I'm confused as to how the evidence supports compliance.
I think it's specific to the undesignated fund balance, right? It's not necessarily.
We spent the undesignated fund balance in the, that was included in the FY nineteen.
Yeah, but this is confusing, because all of these detailed policies are the superintendent.
Shall not spend.
You should not be spending the previous year's undesignated fund balance. It has to be budgeted by law into a different, but that's different than spending, going on spending.
In FY nineteen, we designated it as revenue in FY twenty.
Right, right.
Right. Right?
Correct.
I mean.
Yeah.
It is.
It is awkward. Maybe we'll do it at a different meeting, but one more time, for the slow ones. My understanding in previous years was that the entire undesignated fund balance, so if you had a million dollars sitting there at the end of fiscal two thousand eighteen, that that had to be a revenue source, a full million dollars had to be a revenue source in FY twenty. You couldn't do it in FY nineteen, because you weren't, you know, when you're doing the budget for that year, you wouldn't have known what that undesignated fund balance was. That was what John Obbin had said to me when I asked this question, that that entire amount had to show up verbatim.
It does.
In FY twenty. So my question for you is, I understand that other districts somehow carry some kind of undesignated fund balance as some kind of contingency. Maybe I'm misinterpreting what that means, maybe there's some other mechanism to do that, but I'm just confused about how we sort of ended up with basically no contingency. I think of it as a balance sheet, I know that that's not how, the language that we use in school districts, but I think of it as, you know, cash flow operating statement and, and balance sheet, I think of it as cash essentially, sitting on the balance sheet as a cushion for those years where, you know, there's a difference, for example, in revenue that's coming in by, and it's not gonna be a huge thing, but at least a couple of percentage points or something is sitting there to smooth out some of that volatility and things that happen, you know, changes to special education reimbursement rates, those kinds of things. So I guess maybe I'm missing that piece, that link of, you know, how other districts are somehow doing that, and we somehow ended up not doing that, and what we can do in the future to make sure that there is the appropriate level of contingency, both on the operating side, so, you know, on the expenditure budget, but then also in this undesignated fund balance, we don't find ourselves in such a negative position in a future year, so.
Okay, you wanna take a shot, or? I can take it, I can take, I can take a shot. So I think you, we can't confuse an undesignated fund balance from a fiscal year with a fund balance.
Okay.
With a, because an undesignated fund balance must be allocated to the second fiscal year's budget as revenue from the time of creation, right, from the time we un, we don't have a designated fund balance. It doesn't mean that you have to expend that all in that budget year, it means you have to reduce the draw on the education fund by that amount in the following year. So you can build a fund balance, fund balances vary, but the undesignated portion of any specific fiscal year's budget must be included as revenue, as budgeted revenue in the second year following the execution year.
I get that, but the effect of like reducing what you're taking from the ed fund, or asking for from the ed fund by that amount, means that you're asking for less from taxpayers, which means.
Allocating it to the budget requirement.
But you can't do both, right? Because, I mean, if you, if you look at the fund balance, and then you're also continuing your draw from the ed fund, that wouldn't be right either, right? Because we have a lot of entities, school districts, issues doing that around. But isn't it just, all right, so if there's five hundred thousand dollar fund balance, we put it into the budget. We want a contingency fee, we'll put a budget line, you know, line in the budget that says five hundred thousand dollars contingency fee.
You could put another million in if you.
Whatever, whatever you want to put in. It just, it's not automatic, we have to.
Unless otherwise designated, though, that, that undesignated fund balance that's carried over applies, is basically a reduction in the budget that's being asked for from taxpayers, is that accurate?
That's accurate. Yes, that's accurate. Yes.
So unless there was a line item, to Bridget's question, that said whether you're designating it from this, these particular dollars, or just doing a placeholder for a reserve of some kind, it, it's, it is, it sounds like it is in addition to what was being asked for.
Yes.
Question.
So what most school districts do in the state is they actually create a tax stabilization fund. And what they'll do is, is the voters will approve the fund, and then if you have any undesignated fund balance at the end of the year, they'll usually do an article during the budget time to transfer that undesignated into the tax stabilization fund.
Is that a typical line item that you've seen in?
Not, no, not a line item in the budget or anything, it's just a separate, usually article, when you guys do the budget, to say if you had five hundred thousand dollars of undesignated fund balance, you didn't want to put it in the budget, and you wanted to kind of cushion yourself for cash flow, or, you know, for purposes like FY nineteen that happened, you transfer that undesignated fund balance into a separate fund called tax stabilization. And then if you need it one year, because you had a rough revenue year or something, you want to transfer that out to cover the overage, that's what you would do.
I believe that's what Essex does to, to cushion their fluctuations from, from year to year.
Right.
It does.
Okay. Well, I think, as we've talked about the budget coming up this year, I think we need to seriously talk about doing something like that.
Absolutely.
So, and again, I guess I'm, I'm not entirely clear on how the evidence supports compliance, but it might be. I, I do assess, since we're gonna review this again.
Right, we're gonna, yeah, we'll re, we'll re-touch on that as well. So moving on to na, policy number nine, failed to aggressively pursue receivables after a reasonable grace period. The interpretation is that the receivable should not be more than sixty days outstanding without active attempts to recoup those funds. Furthermore, the interpretation is to mean that substantially outstanding accounts will not be allowed to grow whenever reasonable to do so. So we have, the schools-out program, they have new software, and they continue to stay on top of all of their outstanding debts. They have a part-time bookkeeper, and she manages that process. And between her and the director, the accounts that were seriously overdue have declined significantly. And as of this report, the outstanding balance was sixteen thousand eight hundred sixty-four. And these accounts are actually being communicated with the parents as well, so it's in really good shape. So we report compliance. Detail policy ten is accept non-resident tuition students unless tuition is being paid by other Vermont school districts or the state. And the interpretation is that the district will accept any tuition students whose tuition and excess costs are guaranteed for payment by another Vermont school district or Vermont ed, agency of education. There are no privately paying tuition students enrolled in the school district, and all tuition students are residents from other eligible Vermont towns that send their students to our schools. We report compliance.
Yeah, that, the wording of the interpretation seems a little strange to me, that the evidence matches what the detail policy is in, in my mind, because, because we're getting that. But the interpretation is that the district will accept any tuition students whose tuition and costs are guaranteed by another district. Really, it's that we won't accept any who's are not, right? Because this implies that we'll take any and all tuition students, no matter what. That's kind of been our policy, is that as long as the money follows them, we're taking them. But that's not my understanding of what detail policy, it's more of a negative, you know, if there's no money coming with you from another district, we will not accept you. That doesn't mean that we have to accept every single student who does bring money with them. Those are two different sides.
I'm interpreting it as specific to the money coming from the district or the state versus private.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, I remember questioning this in the past, because there could be a scenario in which somebody in another school district just wants to go to South Burlington, and even though they have the availability in their own district, and this policy says that we can't do that. Why not?
Well, there's more, there's more behind this, right? Because there's agreements that have to go into play, but, you know.
But I don't think it does say you can't do that if the district paid.
But what if they don't? So if you're another district that operates the schools at those particular grades levels, and said, you know, I just want to go to South Burlington, because it's a better school, and so what about my home district?
But this is about non-resident students.
Right, but it would be a non-resident student, because it lives, or the student lives in another district. So if you live in some other, some other town, and you got the money, and you want to spend it on South Burlington tuition, this policy says we can't take that kid.
If who has the money, though, Alex?
The, the family, or the student.
Then you can't, that's what it says, it says by the school district.
Right, but why, why do we have that in place? Why should we not allow it? I mean, it's, it's not a problem now, but.
Private paying.
I just don't know why.
Well, because private paying opens us up to a whole lot of other avenues of concern, you know.
And the whole state funding system is based on.
Yes.
Yeah, so it's, again, we've been over this before, I've been over this before, but it opens up a whole lot of.
Different, complex issues.
So was the question that Bridget had about the first clause.
Under the superintendent's interpretation answered, because I had the same question, it does sound like.
This is a question of what Alex was asking.
Yeah.
It's, it's, the way this reads to me is that.
You gotta take any and all, what if it's a thousand, there's no way, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, we have, we have, but we have guidelines specific, I mean, this is a, huh, this is a specific policy about accept non-resident student. We, doesn't, we have rules put in place where we have tuition, you know, enrollment, you know, caps. We can't accept more students than we can appropriately handle.
Oh, sure, I mean, this policy doesn't say that we can't refuse, or we have to refuse, it just says, that's what the interpretation says.
But the superintendent's interpretation implies that. It says, I interpret this to mean that the district will accept any tuition students whose tuition and any excess costs are guaranteed for payment by another Vermont school district. That implies to me that if a thousand students showed up, and they were all being paid by other districts, we'd have to take them. It's a simple couple of word change. I interpret this to mean that the district will only accept tuition students, you know, instead of will accept any, but will only accept tuition students whose tuition are guaranteed by other districts. It's a simple couple of word change, but I just want to make sure that you're not.
I don't have a problem with that at all, I think that's clear.
It's not changing the policy, it's just a change in what we think the interpretation is, I just want to be clear on what the interpretation is.
Right, so that the converse of the policy is not taken literally, and.
Right.
Everyone burst down the door.
Isn't there a cap of one student?
That's in a different, that's under Act one twenty-nine, that's, that's a whole nother piece around the lottery system.
Good recall, though. Yeah.
Good for you.
Let's not throw out, too, that another interpretation of that word, any, which is troubling, is that you won't say no to specialized students.
That's right.
Right.
So, so I totally hear what you're saying, that the any can lead to an interpretation of all, but it also can lead to, I won't sort and pick.
And, and I'm not, I think that you, I think there could be more clarity, I think you got it right, but I read it as any. That has to do with my own brain.
Right.
So.
Well, I'm glad I'm not the only one going down the policy governmental.
What a terrible system, no, I'm just.
Okay.
So just real, this is only somewhat of a tangent, but on the issue of reserves from surplus and such, earlier this year, I, I received a suggestion for a legislative change from Chris Sumner, who's business manager elsewhere, that, that looks at that issue. I'll forward that to you all, I wasn't able to take any action on it this year, but if that makes some sense, that's something, so I'll, I'll send that on to you.
Before we finish, I, we were kind of negligent.
Bill Hall is, is a auditor, and he's been, he's been talking a little bit, so I want to make sure he's identified on camera.
He's been working, working away on audit stuff today, but wanted to spend an evening.
Thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
So with the policy wording, with respect to the actual financial supervision activities, the superintendent shall not cause or allow the development of financial jeopardy or material deviation of actual expenditures from board priorities established in end policies. The interpretation means the budget approved by the board and the citizens adequately reflects the board's priorities established in the ends policy. Managing the district's finances within the budget is adequate alignment of the expenditures with the ends policies. Staying within the detailed limitations of this policy reflects the avoidance of financial jeopardy. So while the district ended nineteen under budget in expenditures, the anticipated revenues fell short of the mark by the seven hundred eighty-three thousand in the general fund. It is important to differentiate between the revenue shortfall listed here and the total deficit carryover amount of seven forty-six in the general fund, and that's also part of Exhibit Six, so it's going back to that whole, you know, fund balance situation. An FY twenty budget was developed using the district's ends policy as a guiding principle. And page one fourteen to one nineteen of the FY eighteen audit report indicates that there were no financial statement findings, and there were no findings or questionable costs from our federal awards, which is attached as an exhibit. So in overall, we report non-compliance in policy two point four point one. And as a result, with detail policy one, we will be closely monitoring these plans to bring this situation into compliance during the current fiscal year if we can. And how we plan to execute that compliance plan, we will explore ways to reduce the impact of the expected deficit to be carried over into FY twenty-one during the upcoming budget process. Set specific dates throughout the school year to examine our projected revenues. Seek input from district staff when settling enrollment projections and utilizing a more conservative approach. The hiring of support in the area of accounting, which isn't mentioned here, however, it is, was an approved position in the FY twenty budget, it just, the position itself has not been hired yet, but we did get the approval from the voters and the board to add that position. It's just that position has not been hired at the right this moment. We had someone that was interested, and then got another job, so we lost out on that. And then engage with and seek guidance from district auditors to help develop additional revenue controls. And so we've been talking with Bill a lot about that as well. So I'm sure there's more questions, and we have lots to answer as well, but.
Yes, we, we're in receipt of the, of the questions, so.
Yeah, I don't feel like we need to go through mine, I mean.
Uh, no.
Tonight, that's, that was, it was a lot of detail, and asked for analysis, most of which I think is covered in the compliance plan.
We just wanted to acknowledge that we've, we've got them, and perhaps others after tonight, you'll have additional ones. We obviously have some things that will, we've taken away, too.
And I'd like to just mention that I put at each of your seats, I'd been asked different times about the allowable to, announced tuition rate. Oh, my gosh, I did it again. I've been trying to prep my mind to say the word announce. So this, these two pages will show you how the. So this, these two pages will show you how the announced tuition calculation was done in FY, for the FY eighteen budget and for the FY nineteen budget. So you can look this over. There's a lot of information here, but this is how you come up with that announced tuition rate. It has to do with your budget, it has to do with your students, and then there's many pieces that are subtracted from your budget in order to come up to that rate. So one thing that I thought would be important to point out, in the FY eighteen sheet, when we were calculating that announced tuition rate, at the time, we used the budget amount of fifty million six seventy-five, because that is what we went to the voters for very similarly. We went to the voters in FY eighteen with fifty point five million dollars. That was defeated. But when announced tuition by law has to be done, it has to be announced by January tenth. So you can only announce with the information you have at that time. So we were announcing at a budget that ended up being significantly more during this process than it ended when it got approved by the voters. And the enrollment account was twenty-four hundred and thirty-one in total. Whereas the next fiscal year of FY nineteen, we had a much different budget number to start with, and then we had more students. So I have had the question why the rate went down so significantly between eighteen and nineteen's announced rates. So this is going to show you the details of how that came about. And it's important to note where I've highlighted the numbers that are so critical to that calculation.
Yeah, I guess my question on that, and I, was I didn't have all this detail, and I still don't have it for, you know, previous years. But I had looked at what the actual ended up announced tuition was in seventeen and sixteen, because that was in something you had prepared before.
Correct.
Tonight, and those numbers were around like fifteen-two, fifteen-one. It was above fifteen.
Right.
And that's why I was, because I know that we had this issue in seventeen, obviously, or in seventeen for the two thousand eighteen budget year. And I understand where that one came from, but my recollection, I mean, this forty-nine, six oh six should be higher. You know, like the starting point should definitely be higher than seventeen and sixteen. And I was just surprised that this was so much lower. I could see some of the variables maybe tweaking it a little bit, but I was just surprised it was that much lower. But I haven't gone through all of this detail again, so.
So I think this will be very beneficial to you to see how the calculation is done and why the big change, too.
There's no question that two thousand nineteen was an aberrant year compared to historical variance in announced tuition rates.
Yeah.
Well, we have your questions. If there's others that come around.
I wanted you to know what you had or details in front of you.
And thank you, Amy, and Gary for working hard on this. I appreciate it. We'll bring it back in November.
Okay. Unless there's any other questions, we will move on to Agenda Item eleven, which is Negotiations Update. And I think we noted in here that the administrators, the Subcommittee for the Administrative Team is in progress now. And that the board has been notified by the SBA leadership of the intent to negotiate a successor agreement, and we're working on responding to that specifically. And we did get the signed contract for, which was ratified by the board at our last meeting, and that will get implemented into the system in short order. Anything else on negotiations? All right. Agenda Item twelve, Other Paper Articles.
She's here on the hook for.
Yes, I am.
For education. I need to sit down with you or, yes. Give you some assistance, some bullet points for that one. And I think that, I believe it's due the thirty-first. Is that right? Okay. Yeah.
And that'll be the next month, I believe.
I don't think I have the, is that in the packet?
I didn't see. Actually, I don't see it now.
Okay, I think we have the next two or three planned, so.
Yeah.
Let's make sure we get the actual list for the next meeting. Because we'll probably have to add one at that time. All right. Agenda, Item thirteen, Setting the Agenda for the November sixth meeting. I have the SBA Resolution Review on there, as well as putting 2.4 back on.
It is on there, actually.
It was, okay, I didn't have that in front of me.
That's good. So we'll add Resolution.
Anything else?
It's production week.
Tell us what show it is.
When is the show? So I'm in two right now, which is a little crazy. And so I will also be missing the following meeting, which is unplanned, but it happens.
No wonder, you wanted Delaney on board now?
We need to get him on before November.
I'll take Delaney already.
Um, yes. So I am in The Addams Family at The Flynn, and that is produced by Lyric Theater Company. And I am in The Ancestor Ensemble. I'm the eighties groom, Ancestor. And so that is November seventh through tenth. And so obviously, November sixth is going to be our final dress rehearsal. And then I'm also in Beauty and the Beast here at the high school, and I'm playing Lumiere. And that is November twenty-second and twenty-third.
You have to give us those dates so we can make sure we might, so we can attend maybe some of those. It's awesome.
That'd be great. All right. Seeing nothing else on the November sixth agenda, Agenda Item fourteen, Future Agenda Items. The good news is, these are all designated under policy monitoring. Any other items we need to make sure get included? Seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item fifteen and consider the minutes of the October second meetings. Any changes or modifications? All right, seeing none, those are approved. Agenda Item sixteen, Considering the Lease Rates for the Phone System Upgrade. And that is worn for action.
How do we accept the administration's recommendation for going with I Capital? Is that? BCI, excuse me. All right, I think I need to put these on now. I'm trying, trying to get by without them.
We have a motion to accept the administration's recommendation for BCI Capital at three point four seven percent. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes. And we'll move on to the Consent Agenda. Could I request that those be broken out?
Want to take all of them off or one of them off?
I would like to take all of them off, actually.
For discussion, yeah. Yeah, I agree.
Do them individually?
Just run through?
Yep. So the Municipal Financial Advisor, in your packet, you do have responses, the work that was done. There's three of them in there.
Can we have a walkthrough of these?
Sure.
So we invited ten companies to bid for the Financial Advisory Services. Two ended up responding with proposals. We thought it was fortunate that they were the top two highest-volume financial advisors in the United States. PFM Financial Advisors and Hilltop Securities. We developed criteria. We established a committee to evaluate criteria, to develop questions based on the RFP. We interviewed both companies in person, had an extensive question-and-answer period, evaluated their written proposals. After the interviews, we individually scored and then discussed the rationale behind each of the scores and recommended Hilltop Securities with a total score of four hundred and seventy-three points versus four hundred and sixty-seven for PFM Financial Advisors. The superintendent and select members of the board got to meet them. They weren't involved in the selection process, but they got to interview, you know, ask specific questions.
Could you give me a little bit of a flavor of, the scores don't really mean a lot to me, and they're so close together. So could you just give me a little flavor of, you know, what the discussion was and why one was chosen over the other?
Well, they were both extremely qualified firms. Or there was a, there was a lot of discussion. The score sheets are, they're, they are filed in the bid packet. Hilltop Securities was extremely, they were very positive. They had a very good energy, and their track record, they were comparable with both firms. They both had done similar projects. Hilltop Security had more local, our-size projects than PFM did. That was a consideration. They had worked with a lot of schools in the northeast that had similar projects to the one that we are proposing. Their onsite future presence, we thought would be greater than PFM's. PFM is based in Minneapolis. And Hilltop is based in Lincoln, Rhode Island. And they seem more amenable and eager to be like part of the working group, to attend our meetings in person. Solutions-wise, I think they could have both handled comparable solutions. But it really came down to the lead project manager for Hilltop was extremely impressive and impressed each member of the selection committee, and that their physical presence would be important to our project going forward. That's really the overall differentiators. And they did get one more point for cost. We did that on a percentage basis.
Okay. Can I just share a little bit about, and I thought they were both great, too. Can I just share, do you mind if I share a little bit? I know I wasn't part of the selection process. I really saw Hilltop as having a lot more school experience, it seemed, and really focused on those types of projects. I was a little bit concerned about their lack of Vermont experience, though, I have to say. When we asked them questions about the bond bank and how we would be rated and those kinds of things, I think that there's a bit of a learning curve there in terms of the Vermont environment and how the bond bank works, and, you know, like what opportunities are available in Vermont. And so I felt like their Vermont learning curve was going to be pretty steep. I felt like PFM, as you were saying, has done more municipal-type projects, but they're deeply, you know, involved in Vermont. And so they could talk a little bit better about how the bond bank is likely to work and factor into any kind of financial package that they might try to put together for us. They, in my mind, seemed a little bit more positive about what they thought a potential bond rating for us. And again, that's all guesswork, you know? But I was just a little bit, you know, there was just a little bit of concern for me about Hilltop, maybe not thinking quite as broadly about some of the things in Vermont. So I felt like one had a Vermont learning curve, the other one had sort of a school learning curve. And I've been sort of wrestling with, you know, which learning curve is bigger and more concerning. And then, like you, I mean, they're based out of Minneapolis, but then two of the guys, I mean, one is in Boston and one is in Rhode Island as well. So I kind of felt like there would be some local team. I did get a little bit of the same impression. It seems like the committee had, though, that Hilltop was perhaps a little bit hungrier and a little bit younger and more focused on trying to really focus on this project as a way into Vermont, you know, wanting this to be, you know, a really sort of feather in their cap to try to break into the Vermont market. So maybe would try a little bit harder on a project our size versus PFM. But the PFM has done some advising for the bond bank and obviously is Burlington's main financial advisor when it comes to this kind of stuff. So I, it was interesting to me to sort of see how close they were in your minds, too, because I've been wrestling with it since we sat down with them myself. But that's just a little bit more color from Elizabeth in my meeting with them. And I don't know if you guys have other things to add to that, but.
The only note that I would, I would say, Elizabeth, in the documentation that they provided, Hilltop was more positive about the bond, their projected bond rating than PFM in the documentation.
That's interesting, because what they said in the media, you know, I did read through their documentation. I just, my recollection from the meeting was that Hilltop was a little bit more negative. They went into sort of the discussion about how, and maybe this was just because we didn't get into it as deeply with PFM. PFM was the first one we met with, and so we were talking more high-level issues and, you know, asking them more questions about the process, probably, than we asked about Hilltop. So Hilltop, we got a little bit more into the detail. And so they talked a little bit about us. Hilltop talked about us not being able to get maybe even as good a rating as the city would theoretically get because we have the same taxpayers. PFM seemed a little bit more positive by like, you know, half a, you know, a plus or a minus on the bond rating, just in their initial impression, because they talked about some different strategies with the bond bank and general obligation versus moral obligation and all of that kind of stuff. It was a lot of detail. And it could have just been spin for the discussion. But I felt like they had sort of dug into ways to potentially support a higher bond rating. Not that Hilltop can't get up to speed or think through those things with us as well. But, yeah, I'm sure either of them would be great, so, yeah, I'm not, I'm not.
Yeah, my own interpretation, having met with them, is we met with Hilltop. Hilltop had the benefit of having done the tour of the school before we met with them. And so brought a lot of perspective around the presentation, the bond presentation, and also the fact that the district and the community has really done a great job maintaining facilities over the years and that that would, it's that kind of anecdotal and qualitative information that also might support a better bond rating, too. So I agree with Bridget. I thought they were very.
Yeah.
I do think, you know, I think knowledge of Vermont bond bank in terms of a strategy around what portion of the bond we might approach the bond bank with and timing of that would be something for the team to kind of make sure that they're getting themselves up to speed on.
Yeah, exactly.
I do want to add, Elizabeth, since you said that, it sparked my memory. My very first note on my score sheet was the interest and the excitement in the detail of our schools and how they would, how they would present that to a, you know, potential rating agency. And both firms, you know, they were very consistent in what they said about the rating agencies and that, you know, they both recommended an S and P, probably as the first choice for a rating agency.
All right.
Discussion. So the next one is the Master Planning and Visioning Public Relations. And Gary, maybe you can do this one as well.
Yes, we, we interviewed the two firms that bid. And Juniper, for the committee that met, they had a much more personal touch approach. And for me, the other big thing was that their structure that they proposed was based on hourly, and it provides the district with some ability to control expense. And I thought that was important and very strong recommendation in the architectural community, having done similar work in the past and came very highly recommended by, really, the leaders, colleagues.
For me, the big one for Juniper, well, there were two, really. It was, I felt like the other respondent was more focused on the last few days, like really sort of like the last little campaign right before a vote in terms of getting out information. information and getting voters to go to the polls, which made me very concerned when we have town meeting that comes right on the heels of winter break, and a lot of people are going to be out of town. So they didn't sort of have, and maybe we were just too small for them, that was the other impression I got, that maybe we were a little smaller than their typical client, and so they maybe hadn't thought through quite as polished a presentation as, as, as Juniper, and Juniper didn't have a really fancy presentation, but they had thought through a lot of the issues a little more deeply, and were more focused on the whole getting out information campaign. The other thing I really liked that they said was they're based, you know, in Chittenden County, and the different people that work on that team are in different towns, and, and the representative from Juniper really talked a lot about the different flavors of the different towns, and how they think about their schools, and how they think about their municipalities, and the resources that they want to put into those municipalities, and understanding what the pressure points are or what the concerns are. There was just some deep thought that had kind of gone into differentiating, this isn't just a package of stuff I'm going to hand over and expect you to kind of, you know, work with my boilerplate stuff. It was more of a team approach, coming to our willingness to come to our working group meetings and really kind of immerse themselves into what we were doing. Just gave me a, a more comfortable feeling that they sort of understood what we were looking for from them, but.
And was the, was the cap placed by us or by them on the overall project costs?
Was the cap placed by?
By, by Juniper, or to do the work we required within the scope, or did we say?
Oh, I said, I said that. I mean, you have the authorization, obviously, to change it, but I thought it was important to put a not to exceed dollar figure in.
I just wondered if they, they said, based on this hourly rate for these areas of expertise, we believe we can deliver the scope of your project within that.
They, they did not say that specifically.
Just wondering where it came from. Thanks. Any other questions?
And then the last bid is for master planning and visioning pre-construction services. And I think, Gary, you're on again.
Yeah, yeah, it's, so, so we, we invited five companies to bid on these projects. We received two proposals, one from PC Construction, which we recommended, and one from DEW. So cost was a factor, and I think some of the cost differentiation became, came from, I think PC did a, a better job interpreting the scope to what we were actually looking for, and understood that we were, we were looking for, you know, independent confirmation of costing for, for the project. I think the other differentiator in, in those of us that reviewed those was that, you know, PC has an in-house capability for the entire scope. They don't, they don't have to partner with an engine, engineering kind of firm or others. They had the in-house capability. Both good, good proposals from a cost standpoint and from a capability standpoint, I thought the recommendation was pretty straightforward.
Did, did you think the scope was not fully understood by a second vendor?
I, I don't think it wasn't fully understood, I just, I think they, they, they thought that the hours would take, were many more.
Can I ask the converse of that question? Could it be that PC doesn't understand the full scope and thinks it's much less than it really is going to be?
Not, not from, not from my reading of the bid.
And to be clear, we do have, just to be clear, we have Art Klugel here, who is with PC. He's, he's, he's attended the meeting for this, I'm assuming, because you love being at our meetings, it's great.
I'm really glad that we waited to the very end of our meeting, after all that policy governance, to get to this. No.
It's transparency here.
Yeah.
Here and again, I think from, from our perspective, they fully understand very well the scope of the, the project, you know, of what you're talking about. So they are, they've been in the game for a long time.
Well, my understanding from talking to Lee, and correct me if I'm wrong, Art, is that PC is, is more local and is bigger than DEW, and that DEW to, you know, to do the work is going to have to partner with other outside consultants. And when you start to do that, you have to then pay them on top of, and you have to make some margin on the project as well, so they don't have all that in-house capability and therefore have to go out and find it in other places. That's also, you know, a consideration down the road, because they would be potentially a bidder on a, on a project. They would need to partner up with enough firms to get to a big enough size to even get, you know, proper insurance and that kind of thing to do a project. So my understanding is a difference in size and in-house capability versus out-of-house capability, and then also an understanding of the school district, Art has been, Art was our, our task force for the elementary schools as well, and has been very involved in school issues all the way along, so.
So what's the discount? I didn't understand that. Is the discount 21%?
Just because PC Construction's nice. I think one is that they're local, one is that they're, you know, I'm, I'm not going to speak for Art, but I, I made some assumptions that they were a local firm with the capabilities to do it all from here within their firm, and I, I really didn't ask the question, to be honest.
Well, I mean, I, I know that Pittsagalli has been very involved.
PC Construction.
Yeah, I know.
You better be careful.
Well, I, but, but he, he is, by understanding, involved with this PC Construction. He's been very generous to the, to the district with his time and over the years, so. Anyway, I just was curious, that was there.
It's roughly at the same time as we were working on the policy governance monitoring report for FY19. So it was a.
So those are the three, Elizabeth.
Okay, I appreciate the willingness to kind of go into those in some detail. No, there's no action required on these, these are all covered under the $300,000, I believe. Correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, moving on to agenda item 18, AP orders 14 and 15. Any questions or need for clarification?
No.
All right, moving on to agenda item 19, we have two AP order checks to Howard Center for Human Services in the amounts of $65,327.94 and $103,804.30.
Court's payable orders, checks to Howard Center for the amounts that you just said.
I second that motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes?
I move to adjourn.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.